We're out here in beautiful Westwood, working with council member Andrea Boone and the Westwood Community Group to deliver food to dozens of homes and hundreds of families here as we move into the holiday weekend. It is such an important time to always make sure that we're taking care of our residents, especially those who are homebound, especially our children who might not be in school right now. And so, as we all look forward to celebrating the Fourth of July, we want to be able to make sure that the folks can do that, have food in their homes and celebrate, and make sure that we're taking care of those who need it the most. So, we've got a wide variety of food that we're delivering today, everything from chicken to corn to bell peppers, making sure that our residents are well-stocked as we move into the holiday weekend and doing our best to do right by the residents of Westwood. And we've got a great group of volunteers who are here helping deliver food with us and looking forward to seeing our residents and saying hello and happy Independence Day.
Today, we are at the East Atlanta branch of the Fulton Atlanta Library, and we are here celebrating a grand reopening. There's been renovations, some expansion, and we're just happy to say we're back in business. As someone of the speakers here today, we had Commissioner Ron Pitts and other commissioners, as well as the county manager. And this is a place, this is the center of our community. This is the place where you get information, and one of the things we heard today is that there's signs all over the place talking about getting vaccinated. So, it's an information center, and so, we're just honored and happy to be here to say, "East Atlanta Library is back, new and improved."
Today, we're out here partnering with the Westwood Community Group with a vision. We have known these ladies for over 20 years, and they work hard in the community. So, they wanted to get active and help their neighbors that aren't able to get out. Today, we have fresh chicken, fresh corn, fresh bell pepper, onions, and tomatoes, and big bags of potatoes for those seniors to get ready for the Fourth of July holiday. So, I just want to thank my colleague Wes Moreland for all of his support and help throughout the years. And we want to give a special thank you to Wayfield Foods, Kroger, and Publix, and the Atlanta Community Food Bank, of course. We'll be supplying food for over 300 residents total today. My heart is warm and so thankful that I am able to provide support and resources for communities with those seniors and those that, not only the seniors, but those that are without employment at the moment and need just an extra boost to help them.
We are here at the Atlanta-Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, and we're here because during our transportation meeting, we got reports of where we were now with the numbers of how Hartsfield-Jackson is coming back around, travel is resuming, and the airport is really becoming a place where everyone is feeling comfortable traveling and coming to enjoy our airport now again. And so, what we wanted to do as a council is a recovery tour. So, I suggested, "Let's do a recovery tour," and that means let's look to see where we are with the numbers. Are the numbers going up? What do the processes look like? How is security looking, TSA? Our concessionaires, are they easily coming back to onboard and back to where they were before COVID-19 hit the whole world? And we're finding that we are. We are absolutely recovering, and we came out to see it firsthand. We want to know, "Where can we help them, our airport?" Because our airport is our customer also. Every portion of the airport is a customer of the city of Atlanta, because we actually are responsible for running the airport. And we want to make sure that they know that we're here to help them get everything back on track.
I am so happy to be out here this morning. At Effect Fitness, they are a great fitness business in my community. It's great to be here this morning and just being out here without a mask and being able to get ready for the race for Juneteenth. Here we are at Effect Fitness, we're giving them a proclamation in terms of the celebration of Juneteenth and what it's all about, but also just again, being out here and what they do. This is Juneteenth commemoration. You know, it's a day for us to recognize that misinformation is not a good thing, but we're going to celebrate the good times, and we're going to celebrate advancement. And African-Americans are awesome being celebrated today. Fitness is important, and so, I am so happy to be here with my colleague Joyce Shepherd in her district, celebrating a day where we're coming together for fitness, for commemoration. It's a great day in Council District 12. There you go. Thank you.
Well, we are here because we are celebrating 10 years of the existence of Jenny Drake Park. And I'm so proud to be here as council member who represented this district. Ms. Jenny Drake, who the park is named after, lived next door. She would call my office almost every other day if a leaf fell off a tree in this park. She would call, and she was always a great caretaker. And so, it's a great story. Today, the proclamation, of course, is celebrating 10 years of this park, but it's also great that it is the Juneteenth celebration, because we're celebrating not only that enslaved African-Americans were freed, finally, when they had already been freed two years ago, but it's also freeing up this community to have a wonderful, lovely, green space where they can come and commune with nature. So, all of it comes together for the good.
Down there for we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Atlanta, we would like to proclaim this day, May the 22nd, 2021, as Tom Murphy Day in our fair city, and witness thereof, we pause the seal of the city of Atlanta to be here to face. Congratulations.
We're here today to celebrate Tom Murphy and 40 years of his restaurant Murphy's in the heart of Virginia Highland. But that's unusual these days to have a business owner, locally owned, lives in the area for that period of time. And, you know, he serves a fantastic meal. It's a place people come for baby showers, for brunches, for weddings, and he's been tremendous in giving back to the community as well. I'm just so excited that Murphy's, Tom says that they're back to their pre-COVID business. People are out and about. He's making it a safe place to eat. I've been back here, and it's one of my favorite places, and I hope people will get out as they feel comfortable and back into their local restaurants.
Good morning, and welcome to the Transportation Committee here at Atlanta City Council. I am your Chair, Andre Dickens, and I'm here by call this meeting to order. On the line right now, we have council member Wes Moreland, council member I'd, and council member Brown. Are there any other council members that have joined at this time? Okay, I know that others are going to be coming throughout. So, we have a quorum, and I call this meeting to order. We need to amend the agenda. Well, first, let's read the remote meeting statement.
Mr. Dickens, this is Councilmember I'd. I missed you calling my name.
Oh, yes. I mentioned that you're here, Mr. Brown is here, Faroki is here, and Wes Moreland is here. And Ms. Fulandini has just asked me to slow down just a little because Channel 26 isn't playing this yet? Is that the case, Ms. Fulandini?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just one second. I'm checking to see if it's airing yet.
Yeah, I need that to get going.
Okay, it's up now. We can proceed.
Okay, so, I already called the meeting to order. I'm Andre Dickens, your Chairman of this committee, and we have on the line Brown, Wes Moreland, I'd, and Faroki. So, we have a quorum, and I know other members will be joining. Ms. Overstreet says she's going to pop in in a second. Please read the remote meeting statement, Ms. Fulandini.
This Transportation Committee meeting is being conducted remotely as advertised and as in accordance with OCGA 50-14-1. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order and the Rules of Council as authorized by the City Council. The public may access the meeting by dialing 877-579-6743, conference ID 831-599-1256, which was noted on the July 9, 2021 Public Meeting Notice. The public may also view the meeting on Channel 26, the council's homepage at citycouncil atlantaga.gov, the council's YouTube channel, or the council's Facebook and Twitter pages via @ATLCouncil. All presentations are available on the Atlanta City Council Transportation Committee presentation page. The agenda was published and made available on July 9, 2021. See atlantacga.iqm2.com. In addition, the public was able to submit comments via voice note at 404-330-6059 between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. to be reported meeting. All persons present on the remote council meeting conference bridge are requested to mute your phones and speakers. Additionally, speakers must be acknowledged by the Presiding Officer prior to speaking. Each council member is requested to open your Outlook email and minimize screen. Amendments, substitutions, and informational documents have been distributed to committee members beforehand. And council members Faroki and Overstreet have joined the line.
All right, welcome. Welcome to both of you, Faroki and Overstreet. Now, I will make a motion to amend the agenda to accept two walk-ins. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
Okay, I heard Overstreet, second. Let's prepare the vote, and I also heard Mr. Brown. But Overstreet, second. Okay.
The vote is open. Mr. Dickens, I'm having computer issues, so you'll put me down if you're in the authority.
Okay. Who else is voting?
The vote is closed now. 6/8/08, the agenda has been amended.
All right, now, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
Okay. Let's prepare our vote on the amended agenda.
The vote is open. I'd is a yes.
Okay.
Vote is closed. 6/8/08, the agenda has been adopted as amended.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve amendments. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
All right, thank you. Let's prepare a vote.
Vote is open. I'd is a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vote is closed. 6/8/08, the minutes have been approved.
All right, now, let's play the public comment. We have six minutes worth of public comment. Please play that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Marshall. I'm happy to be attending your Virtual Transportation Committee tomorrow. I did notice I got the invite through Facebook that four people were attending out of a city of 475,000 people, I estimate. So, I never even heard of the Transportation Committee. I'm an avid MARTA user, so I'm glad that we can talk about MARTA, not just cars, and pedestrians, and not just cars. So, I'm really interested in this committee, and I think if we better advertise all committee meetings, a lot of people in the city really care. I care. I would go to as many committee meetings as I possibly could, or submit my comments virtually, if that's what we're doing now with COVID. And thank you for having me, and I hope you have a wonderful day. Thank you. Bye-bye.
I am Brother Anthony, and I'm a fellow church. I have a duty to stand. I do not believe in women, cut the trees, Christian. And listen, I do call on this committee, the Transportation Committee, championship, Mr. Andre Dickens, who is running for the mayor of the state Capitol of Georgia, Phil Aaron. They have a problem on Trail and Button Road. I have been given legislation in 2017, passed by members of the Council and Transportation Committee, recommended by Mr. Doherty, the former commissioner, and other members of Council exclusively, working on behalf of that administration that opposed Michael Sturrock, or excuse me, of Button Road. Katrina Paul, the former, Chica Stafford, Marv Reese, 13 months, the senior county president of this district. This is Chief Sturrock, once this thing's in two times, 2010, the work and contemplating that in the work did on Button Road, hadn't had no work since 1993. This is 2017, Mr. Dixon, that you said, in 2018, 2019, oh yes, we going to pursue giving this what did, Brother Anthony Mohammed, as long as you won't agitate me. I'm for you, not that agitating, you as a church. Now, why does it have council question that be appointed to be the commission of the district, and don't these victims can work on behalf of their constituency of Atlanta? Ms. Overstreet did mine, but again, and the co-chairman of the Transportation Committee, and I have gave accolade to her work, her staff, and what she did on behalf of a senior to get forward problems corrected, by only just talking to the people, talking to the homeowners, and they've done that. And whether other members I had called on to collaborate with my district level representatives, but Mr. Dixon, Mr. Dixon, why does this you cannot be trans-? That is the idea of government with the constituency. Brother Anthony Mohammed, Mayor of Nixon Hotel, Oscar Ram, a nation, no more.
Greetings, committee members at staff, and special greetings to you citizens and voters of Atlanta, monitoring our government in action between now and November 2nd this election year. Ben Howard, senior advocate, public policy analyst. Will residents of neighborhood planning units R ever be able to have a discussion about transportation matters at an SPUR meeting? No, because the SPUR 9 does not allow, and has never allowed, an SPUR Transportation Committee, and because the SPUR 9 wants to suppress anything that might attract to meetings from of the 20,000 residents of SPUR. The fewer people who attend SPUR meetings, the fewer people the SPUR 9 will have to try to control. On the SPUR 9 agenda for the month of July, will be no report about the consideration to widen campus control to accommodate a third lane for the RCB or BRG rapid transit district and rapid transit effectively. Also, another of the SPUR 9 agenda for July, is any conversation about improving street lighting, or about sequence traffic signals, or about modernized traffic lights for the Capitol Cascade Corridor. As a matter of fact, nothing will be on the SPUR 9 agenda this month, because unlike other neighborhood planning units, the SPUR 9 has forced SPUR residents and stakeholders to take the entire month of July and December off. For enjoy your time off away from crime and other crises, SPUR 9 will see you on the first Wednesday in August. Anthony Peter Robinson, Carlos Claire, Ricardo Jacobs, Vanessa L. Scott, Alvin White, Allison Hathaway, Sherri Williams, Cheryl Brown, HFX, and you supporters and underground cohorts of the SPUR 9 significant. See you on August 4th.
Thank you to all public commenters. Appreciate your comments today. Now, let's move to ordinances for second reading. Ms. Fulandini, please read those two items, those three items.
Item number one, 21-0-0439, in ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor her designate to execute the Second Amendment, extend the operation and management agreement with Atlanta Airlines Terminal Company LLC, extend the term of the agreement with retroactive effect from December 1, 2019 through May 31, 2021, and amount not to exceed $700,000.01. To continue the operation and management for airport dock control services for outside cargo airlines and handlers at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, and for ratified services rendered in connection with the agreement in accordance with Section 2-1163, subsection C of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinance, all contracted work will be charged to unpaid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
All right, General Manager Beadore.
Good morning, Chairman Dickens. This is Michael Smith, Deputy General Manager at Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, sitting in for our General Manager, Mr. Beadore, who was out of town today. In this paper, we're asking the authorization Second Amendment to the operation and management of the airport truck dock control services system. As some background, in 2016, the airport needed to manage a growing cargo business, which had resulted in increased tractor truck traffic, picking up and dropping off cargo at our south cargo facilities. This created congestion at the docks and roadways, blocking traffic, and also created conflict within between drivers. The truck path system brought some order to this. We created the computerized dock reservation system and also managed the truck staging lot, which is located on Sullivan Road, which also happens to serve as the staging lot for our overlift drivers. AATC provided that service under contract, which was extended by legislation or authority of the Chief Procurement Officer. So, our last authorization expired in November 2019. AATC continued to provide that service from December 2019 through May of this year, when we stopped utilizing their services with the airport taking over those functions. We're asking...
All right.
Go ahead. We're asking for authorization to pay the retroactive amounts.
All right, I'm making motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
All right, let's prepare the vote.
The vote is open. I'd is a yes.
Aye, is a yes.
Thank you.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable.
All right, let's go to the next item.
Number two, twenty-one dash O dash zero four four zero. An ordinance by Transportation Committee establishing the fiscal year airport renewal and extension fund, airport facility, passenger facility charge fund, airport commercial paper series twenty-ten A B, twenty-twelve A, bond general airport revenue fund, twenty-twelve C bond general airport revenue fund, and aviation and commerce fund. Program fund budgets are transferred to and from appropriations, the amount of three hundred and twenty-four million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and zero cents, to provide funding for various projects at Hartfield Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
All right, give us a brief overview on this one, too, Michael.
Sure. This paper will authorize the funding of our F Y X twenty-two capital improvement program. This will put into place the three hundred and twenty-four million dollars that's necessary for that project, which will include things such as the airfield repairs, ramp replacement, domestic terminal parking deck extension, life extension, and modernization of the gates, as well as several other internal projects. This just puts the funds in place. Once we get ready to do those contracts, we will bring it back to council for award of those contracts.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
All right, okay. All right, we have a second by aye. Let's prepare our vote.
Overstreet, affirmative. Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable.
You have another item?
Twenty-one dash O dash zero four five eight. An ordinance by Council member Cleta Winslow authorizing the mayor her designate to make the intersection of Spark Street Southwest and People Street Southwest an always stop controlled intersection. Authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersection and for other purposes.
Ms. Alexander, are you on? Cortina?
Atlanta Department- Cortina Alexander, Atlanta Department of Transportation. Spark Street and People Street, People Street are both residential local roads. Aside from the residential land use, some commercial uses are also along the corridors. And the west side of Atlanta are within walking distance to the north. We have conducted an always stop assessment, and we are okay with moving the legislation forward.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
All right, let's prepare the vote. All right, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable.
Ms. Pulandini, let's jump down to the walk-in paper. I wanted to make sure we got that while we had a member available. Let's go to the Cascade paper.
Hey, one moment, please. It is a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor her designate to execute an agreement with Matthew Kelly J V for I S B dash C dash one-two-one, thirty-two four-six Cascade Road Avenue Street Cape, and Signal Installation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, for a term of two years with one-year renewal option, in an amount not sixty-two, twenty million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization, and account numbers listed here and for other purposes.
All right, Mr. Rowan, and then we'll hear from Overstreet.
Legislation, oh, sorry, I was muted, sir. Josh Rowan, Commissioner, Atlanta Department of Transportation. We're excited to bring this one to you today. Thank you for the opportunity to walk in. It's time to begin construction on the Cascade Road Complete Street. As we've mentioned before, we're entering the construction season within the Renew Program, and Cascade is the first complete street project on the list to be moving forward into construction. So we strongly recommend approval of this legislation.
All right, Ms. Overstreet.
Well, I am thrilled beyond words at this point, because this is, you know, a long time coming. Before I even thought about being on council, I was actually at Cascade United Methodist Church, picking out benches and lights, the colors, and talking about the five-foot versus the ten-foot sidewalk for Cascade Road. And that was back in twenty sixteen, I believe. And so I'm thrilled, and the people of Southwest Atlanta will no longer be walking in the streets to the bus stop on Cascade, and will have lots of safety calming measures on Cascade, much needed, because it is in a high injury network. And I'm thrilled, so I move approval, please.
All right, I second that approval, that motion to approve. Let's prepare our vote. How do you vote, Ms. Aye?
Yes.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable.
All right, let's do the other. Yes, great.
I just want to thank A T L D O T, especially Commissioner Rowan, for being so diligent about making sure that this project was being handled in the proper way. I've called so many meetings over the last few years, and they've been accommodative, and they're responsive, and full of answers to all of my questions. And I just want to thank everyone for that. And I just look forward to continuing to work together until we're actually walking on our sidewalk. So thank you.
I can occur here here on all of that, for sure. All right, let's go to the next one, that is the Aviation Walk-In Paper.
A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor her designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to consent to the assignment of the concession lease agreement, S C dash five through two six foreign currency exchange services concourses, E and F at Hartfield Jackson Atlanta International Airport with TravelX Currency Services, Inc., exchange the rental and refurbishment requirements and for other purposes.
All right, Michael.
Good morning, Michael Smith, Deputy General Manager. This one does allow us to find the contract from TravelX to BTS, foreign currency exchange services and A T M services. We're just asking to make those changes.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
All right, let's prepare our vote. Ms. Aye, how do you vote?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable.
All right, now let's go back up to item four, twenty-one O four six two.
An ordinance by Council member Cleta Winslow to amend the twenty-fifteen municipal facilities bond by transferring three hundred thirty-four thousand and nine hundred and five dollars and zero cents from the District Corps of Renewal Atlanta Bond for the purpose of street paving on Stafford Street Southwest and for other purposes.
Mr. Rowan or Ms. Alexander?
This one's mine, Mr. Chair, Josh Rowan, Atlanta D O T. This is a fairly simple piece of legislation. It's moving money from Council member Winslow's vertical renewed discretionary account to her horizontal renewed discretionary account for the purpose of asphalt resurfacing. So we support this move and seek approval.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Overstreet.
All right, let's prepare our vote. Ms. Aye, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable. Item number five, twenty-one dash O dash zero four seven three. An ordinance by Council member Cleta Winslow to amend chapter one fifty, Traffic and Vehicles, Article four, stopping, standing, and parking, for the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to administer and maintain uniform parking regulations, to add a new illegal parking penalty section, and to update certain provisions and for other purposes.
All right, Ms. Grant.
Good morning. Good morning, Councilmember.
Good morning.
And committee members, this is Stephanie Grant, the City of Atlanta's Law Department. The purpose of this legislation is to track the state law provisions into the city code regarding prohibitions for on-street parking within twenty feet of a crosswalk, fifteen feet of a fire hydrant, or thirty feet of a stop sign. And it also increases the minimum parking citation fine from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars, while still preserving the city's municipal court's authority to impose a maximum fine of one thousand dollars.
Okay, great. I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
Second, aye.
Okay, we got a second by Overstreet. Let's prepare our vote. I take that almost second of a yes.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable.
All right, let's go to the next item, and Ms. Grant, please be ready to respond to it.
Yes, number six. Twenty-one dash O dash zero four seven four. An ordinance by Council member Cleta Winslow to amend chapter one fifty, Traffic and Vehicles, Article four, stopping, standing, and parking of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to add a new Division ten, Castleberry Hill Permit Parking, for the provisions of section one fifty dash forty-eight and one fifty dash forty-nine of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to update certain provisions and for other purposes.
Yes, Stephanie Grant again, on behalf of Department of Law. This ordinance creates a new residential permit parking program in the Castleberry Hill area. It creates a new program in Division ten of the code. It outlines the boundaries for that permit parking, it's limited to certain streets. This area is a challenge because it's mixed use, and so only certain streets will be reserved for residential permit parking. This authorizes the permit application, the application fee, and the display of the permit to follow all other residential permit parking program requirements that are existing in city code section one fifty dash one fifty. It establishes minimum penalties for violating the R P P rules, and the minimum fine set at seventy-five dollars, still preserving the authority of the municipal court to increase that fine up to a thousand dollars. And it authorizes the A T L D O T to install appropriate parking signage within thirty days of the effective date of the ordinance.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
Okay. Ms. Aye, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable. Our next item is number seven, twenty-one dash R dash three six six five. A resolution by Andrea Alboon, authorizing the mayor her designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute an amendment to the governmental pole attachment license agreement with Georgia Power Company authorized pursuant to twenty dash R dash four zero one eight to fix wireless facilities on Georgia Power Company-owned streetlights and street utility poles and for other purposes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Josh Rowan, Atlanta Department of Transportation. It was about a year ago, we brought forward a pole attachment agreement with Georgia Power that covered fiber optic cables. We had talked with Georgia Power about coming back with an amendment for wireless devices. So this amendment covers the attachment wireless devices to Georgia Power poles. We recommend approval.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second. Vote is open.
Aye, is a yes.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable. Next item is number eight, twenty-one dash R dash three six six seven. A resolution by Council member Andrea Alboon requesting the Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to conduct a traffic study at the intersection of Branch Drive Southwest and Line Road Southwest to determine the need for any safety improvements such as reduce speeds or stop signs and for other purposes.
Cortina Alexander, Atlanta Department of Transportation. We will conduct C volume and data information for both streets, inventory any existing signs, form a crash history analysis, and determine any deficiencies. A residential always stop one analysis will be conducted, and any results and recommendations will be compiled into a report. This location has not been studied in the past for any type of remediation, so we do recommend approval of this piece of legislation.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second. Vote is open.
Ms. Aye, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable. Item number nine, twenty-one dash R dash three six six nine. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor her designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into an encroachment agreement with G R E Spring Street LLC for the purpose of installing an anchor support system into the Abercrombie Place right-of-way at eight-five-nine Spring Street Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh eight, and for other purposes.
Cortina Alexander, Atlanta Department of Transportation. This legislation will allow the use of permanent pipe beds. This will be required to support a soaring wall system for a twenty-five-story Murphy Family tower with one floor of underground parking and a foundation. We have reviewed all of the engineering drawing and calculations, and would like to move this legislation forward.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
All right, let's prepare our vote. Ms. Aye, how do you vote?
I am finally online.
Oh, you're online, okay, good.
Yes.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable. Next item is number ten, twenty-one dash R dash three six seven O. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor her designate to execute renewal number one for contract number S C dash nine seven two four, designed for the Westlake Avenue Bridge Project with Keith and linebacker, linebacker engineers on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of one year beginning May nine, twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, through May eight, twenty twenty-two, for the time only, with no additional funding required and for other purposes.
Mr. Chair, I'm Josh Rowan, Atlanta Department of Transportation. This is actually just a contract extension for time, no money included. It's read on the Westlake Avenue Bridge Project, which is one of our renewed T-S Ross projects. We seek approval.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Overstreet, second.
All right, now let's prepare the vote. Ms. Aye, how do you vote?
Yes, but I can vote online now.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Vote is closed, six eight zero and eight, this item is favorable. Item number-
Pulandini, can you jump to the, can you jump to twelve? I may have to leave, and I wanted to handle this one since it has an amendment.
Okay, item number twelve, twenty-one dash R dash three six seven three. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor her designate to enter into a cooperative agreement with United Rentals, Inc. to be designated S C P G dash one-two-one zero three three nine pursuant to Atlanta Code of Ordinances, section two dash sixteen oh two, utilizing the source well contract number zero six two three two zero U R I, to rent various medium and heavy-duty equipment on behalf of the Department of Public Works, for an initial term of three years with an additional one-year term to be exercised solely at the discretion of the City of Atlanta in an amount not sixty-one million dollars and zero cents. For any, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the funding accounts listed herein and for other purposes. And there's an amendment to replace all Department of Public Works references with the Atlanta Department of Transportation.
Yes, I make a motion to amend to replace all D P W references to A T L and D O T references. Is there a second? Do I have a second?
Second, aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Let's prepare our vote on the amendment.
Vote is open. Whoever wants to vote.
Okay, you ready to call the vote? I think those that are away are away temporarily.
One moment, please. Vote is closed, five days there and eight. This item has been amended.
Okay, now let's hear the item. Ms. Rowan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is essentially a co-op purchase agreement between the Atlanta Department of Transportation and Atlanta Department of Public Works. We find that oftentimes they have contractual mechanisms in place that are quite convenient for us to be able to utilize. And so this is, I believe, the second one. We had piggybacked on a landscaping contract at one point and now this has enabled us to rent medium and heavy duty equipment should the need arise. But we seek approval.
I make a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second? The second, Ms. Aye?
Second, aye.
Okay, we got second by aye. Let's prepare our vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five days there and eight. This item is favorable. Item number eleven, twenty-one dash R dash three six seven one. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor her designate to execute a utility relocation agreement between the City of Atlanta and Georgia Power Company for the removal, relocation, or adjustment of electrical and communications facilities owned by the Georgia Power Company for the Morse Mill Road at Westley, West Leslie Road intersection improvement project on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to remit payment to Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed two hundred eight thousand, fifty-nine dollars and zero cents and for other purposes.
All right, let's hear from Ms. Alexander.
Mr. Chair, I'll take this one. This is Commissioner Rowan. This is one of our renewed T-S Ross projects. It continues down the path. We've begun the process of acquiring right-of-way. Now we begin the process of working with utility companies for utility relocation. I would add, anything in the hundred thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollar range means that our team did a good job avoiding utilities. So I strongly recommend this one for approval.
All right, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Westmoreland.
All right, let's prepare our vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, five days there and eight. This item is favorable.
All right, thank you all. I hope that... Are there any comments or last thoughts from council members? That was our last legislative item. All right, seeing none. Everyone have a great recess. Be safe on our roads, the sidewalks, and pathways, and airport, etc. We stand adjourned. Thank you.